The item with some recommendations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, Mac, the next item.
Okay, this next item, Commissioner, is a letter. Put you on mute again. You're going to make sure everybody unmute themselves. Or speak, okay, so on here. We received a letter from Grand County, kind of doing the same thing as, basically would drafted a letter that would go out to members of Congress, well as the Senate, just kind of explaining our local conditions here for San Juan County. And so this, we consider ourselves a gateway community as much as that Grand or Green County, or anybody that receives a massive influx of tourism due to the national parks and monuments. And so this letter is going to those representatives, explaining kind of the issues that we're presented with, you know, the lack of tourism. So typically, where a majority of our funds through the county comes from tourism-related tax revenue, as well as your oil and gas lease. Those revenues and centrally assessed, how that has all been impacted. We wanted to make sure that we put ourselves on that radar for future, the potential for any other CARE Act funds that the feds vote on and approve and pass, that were kind of highlighted in that, knowing that, you know, the state of Utah will receive funds up at the top, and then if it's based off of population, then by the time it gets down here to southeastern Utah, we're, because of our populations are so small, the funding amount per capita is typically also small. And so we wanted to explain to our representatives, to Congress and senators, that, you know, we're kind of that gateway to the national parks and the monuments. Everybody's coming to visit us, and we have the impacts that take place on our essential services, like our law enforcement, ambulance services, things like that, and I've listed kind of all of those those essential services that our government provides tourists, or to the general public here. And so we're just asking that they pay attention, they specifically consider funds more directed to those who have that impact, and those that are out feeling those impacts based off of the monuments, the lack of tourists that are here. But where we gear up in our services and in our departments to take care of those tourists now that they're gone away, as well as that revenue, we still have those essential services that are still trying to cover those future needs and program needs currently, and so this letter recognizes that, but just asks them to pay particular attention to gateway communities throughout Utah. We're one of those. So that's what this letter represents. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Maryboy, you're on mute as well.
We take question if I may.
Sorry, Commissioner, you were breaking up there. Can you repeat that?
Question if I can. If permit it.
Thank, so Commissioner Maryboy, I don't know if he's still there. All we would need is a motion to discuss first, just following his his guidance.
Alright.
So we're just looking for a motion to discuss it in a second.
I'll make a motion that we allow discussion on this item.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner. Your question?
My question was, this is a letter. I wonder if it could be in the form of some other option? Like resolution or that sufficient? That would be my question.
Yeah, if you'd rather see this in the form of a resolution, I could certainly do that. The letter specifically was going to be sent out to to our Congressman.
Oh, okay.
We can definitely do it as a resolution. I would, in order to do that, I would have to bring that back on the next commission meeting, which would be then the first week in June, or that first Tuesday of June. So you're a couple of weeks out. We wanted to get them, they're currently discussing CARES Act funding supplemental packages, and so we wanted to try to get this before, at least our representatives. But we can certainly bring back a resolution on this as well. Either one.
Well, letter is fine. If it's going to individuals, then I would agree. Letter would function.
Yeah, this is going to individuals. We may have lost Commissioner Maryboy. Let me check and see.
Tell him it needs to move on top of the white mesa. Okay, it's better respected.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve and send the letter to our representatives.
I second.
It's just you two. Commissioner Maryboy doesn't look like he's there.
I guess we'll just go ahead and continue.
Okay, so.
All those in favor of the motion?
We got the motion in a second. Do you hear him?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so continuing forward. On the agenda, item. Here, let's see, is in the business and action section? Looks like Commissioner Maryboy is there. So I've got a resolution of the Board of San Juan County Commissioners granting authority to the county accessory to waive personal property fine penalties and. On this one here, personal property tax, tax returns will due on May 15. Now, this resolution puts that due date between January 1st of 2020 and through August 15, 2020, so August 16th would be when it would expire. So basically, that's what this resolution does, is it pushes us out on those due dates. We recognize the fact of the COVID impact on individuals throughout the county, not only on the personal property tax, but also the businesses as well. And so we felt that through that, other counties are doing the same thing that we're initiating here today, is pushing that deadline when everything is due. There's really no net effect to the county. It's just our citizens out.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Looks like we lost Commissioner Maryboy again.
So is Mr. Adams motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I second.
Commissioner Maryboy is still off, so it's just you two that'll be voting.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Two in favor? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you for that one. The, um, the next item on the agenda is an ordinance of the Board of San Juan County Commissioners establishing rules and regulations for the licensing and operation of businesses within San Juan County. We've got Natalie on the line, and she'll be able to discuss this item with you.
I'm back.
Hey Natalie.
I can hear you.
So for the business licensing, we brought this to the commission a couple of times now. So ultimately, this is very similar to the ordinance that was proposed in 2019, but we've gone back and made the requested adjustments from what we've heard from the public and what we heard from the commission when we last proposed this. So you'll notice a few changes in the ordinance. The first is specific to the COVID-19 pandemic, where the county is proposing a wave of application or licensure fees just to help businesses during this time. There's a lot of resources that are coming out to businesses, and a lot of loan applications and grant applications that require businesses to have some sort of business license. And so we're not trying to add an additional financial burden to these businesses, but really, this is intended to be a tool for their use. Under section, well, throughout the, throughout the ordinance, there is an adjustment from supervising of the license being a business license division within the clerk department to being shifted simply to my office, so the Economic Development and Business Services Office. So you'll see that language reflected throughout the ordinance. Under section 1H, we discuss further clarification on home-based businesses, and clarify that no license or fee is required for businesses that conduct home-based businesses. Also clarifying that if the business already has a license with a city or municipality within San Juan County, then they no longer, they aren't required to have an additional layer county business license as well. Under the same section, 1, line L, there's a discussion about agricultural, sale of agricultural products. No business licenses is required for that type of sale. Those are all adjustments that were made based off of previous commission meeting that we had last year in discussing that. Think those are the key. If there's any other question. I know there was a question back when we first proposed the business license. I think it came from Chairman Maryboy, but it was ultimately, what, what's the, what are the pros and cons of business licenses? And Walter Bird was helping with the process too, and so the two of us kind of compiled this list that we had sent over to Chairman Maryboy. So just to bring that back to the table, of the pros of the business licenses, and the reason why we do them is beneficial, is one, to assist with planning and zoning and identifying business location, and ensuring that such businesses are compatible with the current zoning. Second, to identify businesses that are paying, or not paying taxes that are owed to the county. An example of this might include TRT, transient rent tax, or tortural rental or vacation-type homework goals. Third, many businesses, such as contractors and those accepting federal or state money for services, need business licenses of some sort to be able to transact business in the county. So a resource for those businesses. And then, fourth, for economic development purposes, is the county needs business license status to identify growth sectors in areas where specific business activities may be suitable. If we're looking at any cons, cons might include another regulation for some to follow. Many view added regulations potentially as a restriction. So that potentially could be a con there. Again, part of this isn't intended to be an added regulation, but ultimately to be a tool for this business, especially as we've been receiving a lot of requests from businesses for such a tool. And then second, a regulation might be cost to businesses, an additional outlay of money for a business to obtain a license, but reiterating that the county's goal is to keep licenses fees low, it's not intended to be a revenue generator. So not to have an impact on the business's profitability. And so I think during this time, that's even more of a concern, so ensuring that we've added that one line in the ordinance at the beginning stating that San Juan County businesses are encouraged to apply for licensures during this time of the COVID-19 pandemic, the county is waiving application or licensure fees.
Commissioners, if I can add to her presentation, thanks Natalie for that information. One of the things, if you remember back, some of the emails regarding business licensing during the initial stages of the COVID pandemic outbreak, we received several emails from citizens mentioning that if we did have those business licenses, it would help because we would know which organizations were out there with our Airbnb, that we can move here and inform them. Hopefully, some of the public health restrictions that were out there. It seems like we were just overall flying blind of which organizations or who is operating, the Airbnbs, VBOs, things like that throughout the county. And so there was some of that public sentiment that came out, but also really, I see this as more of hopefully helping businesses. If we can, if we can get them registered now during this time where it's free, it'll help them also as we form the Economic Development Committee and start working with them for grants and things like that. We can assure that they are actual businesses that are licensed to operate here in the county. Currently, with the lack, that's like Natalie had mentioned, they're either having to go around us. I know that Blanding has licensed some of those businesses outside of their city boundary, just in an effort to get businesses licensed, so when they are applying for these grants, they can show that they do have an actual business license in their jurisdiction. So it's something that hopefully you see along with us is that it's needed going forward. It'll, it'll help us greatly.
Okay, a motion will be established to start talking about the issue.
I'll make a motion to allow discussion.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by gray eyes. Okay, do we have any questions, comment for Natalie?
How, Natalie, how extensive is the coverage? Road type business on the Navajo Nation, is that gonna be affected?
Mac, I might need a little bit of help with some of the legal pieces behind this. But ultimately, for us as far as enforcing, the enforcement can only happen within within the San Juan County jurisdiction, not including on the Navajo Nation side, is my previous understanding as we've had this conversation.
Okay.
But again, it tended to be a resource for them as they need any additional support, or if they need any funding as they're moving forward and growing their small business.
And Commissioner, this is the same, in here, if it's a home business like that, the home businesses, they have to, one of our cents. And so somebody like that could be considered as a home business. Or we also have the interant merchant, which is kind of a temporary, somebody that engages within a temporary business activity located within San Juan County to sell goods and wires. And so we've tried to cover both that understanding, but knowing that we don't overall have jurisdiction down there, but if it is an entity that's wanting to apply for grants, like Natalie had mentioned, they would want to have a legitimate business license with the county.
Guys, ready to vote?
Okay, Commissioner Maryboy just joined back in, so yeah, we're ready to vote.
All right, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. The next item, Mac?
Okay, this next item is a sitla easement application for D 2104 road. I'll turn the time over to Nick Lambert for this. Nick, are you there? Nick, you're still muted.
I'm hearing.
I know, Nick, we can hear you down the hall, but unmuted, you're not here. Or come down, come down to this room.
Sounds like the phone's in his pocket.
Yeah. Nick, you're still.
Go to the next item.
Okay, the next.
Yeah, I'm still here. Okay, so.
As we're talking about small town, like, can you just clear up the message of like?
Where?
I'm, I'm on, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, I'm not sure why this didn't work. It's been brought to our attention that there's a need for an additional travel route for improved safety and better access for off-highway vehicle travel in areas north and south of U-95, all west of Comewash. This would be in the Mule Canyon, the Texas Flat, and the Bally's areas. Currently, riders in these areas have to drive on U-95 for 1.2 miles to connect with county roads on either side of 95, basically to get from the Texas Flat and Mule Canyon side to the Bally's side and vice versa. A road extension could be made on sitla land, south of U-95, allowing travel through the sitla land as a shortcut connecting roads either side of U-95. This would reduce the need to travel on U-95 from 1.2 miles to 0.2 miles, thereby reducing safety concerns with travel on a highway. The shortcut would be an extension of 0.65 miles in length on an existing county D road, D 2104, to connect with another county road, D 1158. And San Juan County currently has easements for both of these roads. And this extension is a subject of the letter and the easement application you have before you.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, motion would be in place to affect this particular items for the discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Adams, and do I have a second? Second? I'll make a second. Any comment, question?
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I went out and rode these routes with Josh Nielsen, and it absolutely makes sense. It's a much safer route for the general public who are riding in their off-road vehicles. And it's, it's a good, a good request, and my understanding is sitla is, you know, they, they're in favor of it as well, but we have to go through the process, so I think it's a, I think it's a good request, and we other, appear to be certain.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Adams. Anybody on the line that's impacted in this, in this particular area? This will be time to speak out.
The only one impacted would be sitla, and they're in agreement with us.
Okay. All right, well, if there's no other comment or question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I believe we lost Commissioner Gray Eyes.
Commissioner Gray Eyes, he's still there? I think he's, he's he's showing and he's still there.
Maybe he's having lunch.
No, he's on mute. Commissioner Gray Eyes, you just muted yourself.
Tell him to hit star six.
Star six, Commissioner Gray Eyes.
Okay, the next item.
So the next item was that Tangren Lane approval on this document from Clark. Clark, go ahead.
Okay. Commissioners, in our project up in the Spanish Valley area with the sewer and water project, and then the finishing would be the road project that had been awarded to a contractor to chip seal that road. In, in one of the option bid alternatives, it shows chip sealing the road that extends down at the bottom of Tangren Lane into the El Rancho Estates. Now, El Rancho Estates was built in 1998, and they constructed their access road at that time, and they did construct that access road to be road standard, so that it could at some point in time be accepted. But they never did petition and have that road accepted into the system, we just realized. So what we would like is permission to participate with the subdivision in bringing that road back to be road standard, because when the contractors put the sewer and water in, they dug down both sides of that road and contaminated the base. So there's just one strip that goes down the center of that for 10 feet that, that still meets standard. But we would like to participate with them. They will supply the material and the trucking of the material. If we will supply the blade and an operator to peel that contaminated material out and replace it with the proper base material, which will then bring the entire road back to be standard. And at that point, we would like to accept it into our D road system, so that we can go ahead and do that chip seal on that, and then accept all of that road system through Tangren into B road designation at one time. So for right now, what we're doing is asking authorization to assist the El Rancho Estates in bringing that road back to be standard from the contamination that the the contractor who did the sewer and water left in place.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Adams to approve a discussion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Gray Eyes, are you still with us? I'll make that second. Any other recommendations or comment? Or anybody else in the impacted area would like to weigh in on this? If there be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, I guess that will conclude our commission meeting for the day. Mac?
Okay, so with that approval, we will proceed with that and get that brought back to B-road standard. That will allow the contractor that will be starting on the chip seal progress here in the next week and a half or so. They were waiting for temperatures and stuff to get into overnight temperatures to be where the oil will clear properly. Anyway, so they will be starting that project pretty quick, and we will, in the next couple of weeks, we will get that road brought back to standard with their help, or we will help them, I guess. And then it'll be prepared to chip seal that when they get to that portion of the project. It'll take them some time to get all of these roads taken care of, so we'll have plenty of time to get that brought up to standard. Once that is done, I've been communicating with Kendall Laws, and we will have them then go ahead and write a petition to the commission asking that that road be accepted. And then at that time, when it's accepted, then we can go through the process of upgrading all of that D-road system into our B-road system, but it will already be adopted into the D-road system because of the authorization that we've received here today. Are there any other questions?
Yes, I thought they were gonna get the oil for the chip sealing by sometime around the 15th. Is that not true?
Well, that could still, yes, be the truth, but we've got quite a timeframe there, you know, they'll start on the upper end of that, and so we've got plenty of time to get this done in the meantime, so that when they get down to this area, they can go ahead and chip seal that section also.
We're getting a lot of complaints about dust. Is there anything you can do about that in the meantime, Clark? Get a water truck down there or anything?
Well, we could, if I had the manpower to do that. Our best thing we can do is pray for some rain, I'm afraid.
We've gotta make every effort you can to get a water truck down there and start.
Yeah, we actually, we actually have a water truck there, and on occasion, we make a pass-through there as we're doing this other construction. It's just that it dries out so fast, it's ahead of us. We were going to get some desiccant from potash, but when we called them, they've had, it's been so cool that they haven't had the, whatever it is that takes place, the evaporation for their brine water, it's not meeting standards yet, and so we haven't been able to give any of the brine water yet. So, but yes, we are trying to spray a little water out there every chance we get.
I think you ought to station a man down there permanently until we get the chip seal and have him watering those roads every day from these days, because those people are, you know, they've been, they've been in a heck of a position for over a year now. I think we ought to try to accommodate them by getting somebody down there and just having them be down there during the day and water those roads.
Well, that's a great idea, and I wish I had the manpower to do that, but I don't have anybody I could pull from what they're doing to do that. Unless, unless if our shop slows down enough that I could pull a mechanic to do that, I could do that. But right now, we still, I still haven't even got up there and got that upper-end amount peeled, patched, because I've been so short on help. So, but we're getting that as quick as we can, and like I said, we're doing, we're doing everything we can to stay caught up with it.
That may be something we can contract out as well.
Yeah, whatever we need to do, if we need to hire somebody from Green County to keep those roads dust free as we can.
I'll take a look at that.
All right, do we have any commissioners report?
Yes. I want to just make another request that we send a letter under your signature, Commissioner Mary Boy, to the state, thanking him for the $180,000 to help us with our legal costs. I did get an email from Senator Romney's office the other day that we've gotten approval for a big amount, I can't remember the name of the email, that we got a big approval for what's gonna be done on the Cal Black Airport, do you remember? For $100,000, you gotta, you gotta do lighting and overlay on the Cal Black Airport, which was fantastic. We ought to, we ought to send a thank you back to Senator Romney's office on that as well.
All right, I will have Mac send that for my review, and we will certainly look at that, and of course, if everything looks good on all ends, and then of course, according to where our community and county stands, we will certainly acknowledge that. Thank you very much. Any reports from the commissioners?
Commissioner Gray Eyes, you're still muted. Okay, there you go. We still can't hear you, Commissioner Gray Eyes. I can see you're unmuted. I don't think we're getting a good signal for Commissioner Gray Eyes.
Well, go ahead and start with your report, if you have any, Bruce, and then we'll probably close it up after your report.
I don't have anything more to report, anything more than I've already done.
All right, well, I'm in the same position. I'm gonna be on a conference call with the chapter there pretty soon. So I guess that will conclude our commission meeting for the day. And our viewing and listening audience, thank you very much for getting on our commission meeting. We're very sorry that we were unable to do the invocation or the prayer before our meeting, what we normally do, but we've been having phone problems here. I've been having a hard time getting on and staying on, and it sounds like Commissioner Gray Eyes in the same situation. But other than that, you're all in our prayers every day, and we recognize that. And other than that, please be safe, take care, and things are getting better, and then it gets worse again. So hopefully that we'll be able to walk out of this as soon as possible, and other good news keeps coming in, but we just hope for the best. So with that, adjournment would be in place, Commissioner Adams?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.